Good evening and welcome to the Bladensburg Town Council Work Session for Monday, May 12. Thank you for those who are joining us, whether you're in person or watching online. Tonight's meeting is now called to order. The next item on the agenda is the approval of agenda items. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a move.
Moved by Councilmember Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any comments or corrections or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me recall that. Michelle, there was something that we needed to hold off on until June.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. From the approvability agenda, we're asking that you hold off on the...
Was it the contract approval for Boswick?
Yes, the contract approval for Boswick, yes. That is going to be held until the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, that, I think that was the only one, right?
That's the only one. Everything else was pulled. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so with that adjustment, that would remove item G from tonight's, I'm sorry, item F from tonight's agenda. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for April 14th work session. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a move.
Moved by Councilmember Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any comments or edits to the agenda minutes? Okay, hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
I couldn't hear Councilmember Blind. Was she, is she still there?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any nays? The ayes have it. The meeting minutes are approved. Next, we'll move to the meeting minutes for April 29th, the special work session. Is there a motion to approve?
There's a move.
Is that Councilmember Brown? Sorry, like Brown. Okay, Councilmember Brown. And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Are there any corrections to the work session or special session minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The minutes are approved. The next item falls under unfinished business for the special events budget overview for FY 2024 and FY 2025. And so for that, I'll turn it over to, what I want to say, a combination of the town administrator and the treasurer.
Hi, Mayor. Thank, K-Mayor Council, thank you for allowing us to provide information on the special events budget. Mr. Tenelli and I put together an attachment that has the year-to-date that was spent in fiscal year 24 and the year-to-date for '25 on the, on some of the events. I think the one thing that, for a portion of our events, an example would be for the July 4th festivities, we pay for half of it in the previous year because of the need to put down deposits for something like the, for the fireworks and for some of the amusements. Those expenses occur in the previous year. So I just wanted to kind of give that background, but we're here to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Tenelli, is there anything that you want to add?
No, I summarize both years at the bottom of each report and be easier if there are any questions there to, probably direct it there and the detail is all above it as well. I mean, the events are our busiest line item because, you know, we provide a lot of events here for community engagement, so that's all.
Thank you. And the good thing about the event is it is an opportunity for us as the council to do something for our residents and encourage them to come out and be engaged, but also get information on the town and various initiatives, whether it's domestic violence, mental health, and the rest. So I understand there was also a meeting on Friday, so didn't know if the council had any other questions before we move on in the agenda. Councilmember Dixon. Oh, I'll come to you.
I'm gonna try to raise my hand, yeah.
Okay, and actually, Mr. Gray, is it possible to pin them on our screen so we can see them? Okay, alright. Okay, Councilmember Dixon.
Just one question, Michelle or Mr. Vito. In regards to the tents that we use for the Blade Fest, is this, do we constantly purchasing them? Or do we have tents that we reused?
So for Blade Fest, we've usually used our existing tents. I'm trying to go to, are you looking at expenses from '24 or from, from FY '24? Yeah, we, I believe that we purchased some tents that year and then we continued to use them. That's why I'm trying to make sure for, yeah, I'm just, we're going back through that event, but those are, we have, we, in '24, I think in '23, '24, we purchased two or three pop-up tents for the town. And then police has a triple tent, and I believe they have two or three tents that we've always borrowed, but we actually purchased some because we were constantly borrowing the police tents, you know. So that was why we purchased tents in '24 was so that we had a resource moving forward because we realized we could use more tents that could be usable, like the 10 by 10 pop-ups.
Did that answer the question? Okay, you had a follow-up.
Thank you, Michelle. Also, in regards to Black History Month, do we pay all our speakers when we have these events since it's historical and it's black history? Do we have to pay the speakers to come in, or can we get speakers to volunteer?
It really depends upon who's organizing it. Sometimes, last year, I think, I mean, in '24, we didn't necessarily pay the speakers, but we bought books from a couple of the speakers. So it really depends on how that, that kind of goes, that goes about. So it really depends on who's organizing and what the focus of the event is, for any event. We do pay speakers sometimes for events, but it really depends on the organ, the person organizing the event.
Yeah, just for black history in particular, we haven't, since I've been working on it, Councilmember Brown may have a deeper history on it, but I don't recall ever paying speakers. We tend to get folks who are like from the school system or this past year from University of Maryland in the history department, people who want to come and speak and serve as the keynotes. And even if I've done panels with it, those folks who are major personalities, we've never had to pay them. So, but like the administrator said, other people do the event organization differently. I will say there are times where if we're using a university, for example, we had Bowie State Choir a few years ago, they did ask for a donation to help offset their expenses and help with transportation. So we do have to think about that sometimes, depending on who we're involving in the program, but that, that's my understanding.
Thank you so much, Michelle and Madam Mayor. So I was looking at the report for 2024 and I saw two speakers on it. So that's where my initial question came from. So thank you so much.
Can you, because I'm trying to go through here, elaborate on that. So for Black History Month in 2024, we had it at the library and we had the two authors and we purchased their books. So it's probably for purchasing the books to give away. We didn't pay them.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Sure.
Councilmember Brown, thank you for your patience. Over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, and I don't think we've like paid, not like, because usually speakers, see, and constantly we're from $2,000 to $3,000 to $5,000. So I know that sometimes we may have, you know, given a little, you know, a little donation or something, but not outright paying, paying speakers. I don't recall that. And with the events, you know, because I think it's really, you know, great that we're paying, we do these events and everything, but what, what we, what we need to consider is how do we capture the data? So, so that we're capturing the data to really show, you know, how many people really live in Bladensburg are attending these events. And that's, and that's, that's something that I think would be beneficial to us to think about. How, how do we capture the data? Because when you go around and you're talking to people, you know, it's, 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 you get, you get a lot of people who are not and some who are. So trying to capture that data would be very helpful with the amount, with the number of events that we're doing. The, when we had the meeting, one of the considerations though is that, because we know that all of the departments, and I don't know if this is where we talk about it, where all of, you know, other departments and we are having to, you know, to cut back because of, you know, what's, what's going on. But in terms of events and with the admin department, we were trying to see how do we continue? How do we kind of make them whole, although they are wanting to and agreeing to, you know, give up, you know, $2.25? And, but for them to do that, but then we say, okay, well, we're going to spend money on these events. And then, and then on top of that, US staff have to come out here and work these events as well. So that's with some additional food for thought in terms of moving forward with that in the budget. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown, I think in your first part of your, your comments, you did ask about how could we measure the, the type of people that are, you know, that residents are actually, you know, coming up with some of the metrics more in regards to who's showing up or the number of people that each event has. And that's definitely something that we can work on with Gray as far as we, we make, that we can kind of do a count. It's going to be really hard to capture though, you know, per se, where the people are coming from the town of Bladensburg. But we could ask for, we could do some voluntary surveys to see if, you know, like a quick survey to see where you're coming from. But sometimes those are not really great at capturing it, but we can try so that that metric, that metric is captured better moving forward. I just wanted to, because I had heard that in the beginning part of your comments and I can say that is something that we could implement as we work through as far as capturing people that are coming to the events.
Yeah, we can thank her, but we don't want to talk it out, you know.
Yeah, and there are services. I know we brought this up a couple of meetings back and I remember sharing that for my job, we're doing this for our program next week. It's a $60,000 investment to basically track that kind of information. Of course, people have to opt into it. But there are tools out there, maybe cheaper, that we could secure, but it's, we can't do it for free. So now we're talking about what are we willing to invest in order to get that information? I think that also, if the event is smaller, I could see requiring registration, Councilmember, and doing free tools for that. But for the fireworks, even if we, and we have tried to do this on, not Eventbrite, but there's some other thing through Facebook, I want to say, where you can sign up for it and share that you're going. But as you know, not everyone does it. I think it's interesting too because it's relative. Because I feel like when I go to the fireworks, I see a ton of people, even kids who've gone off to college, graduated, and they're working and they still are showing up for it. But I realize everybody may not know who I know, so it can feel like, oh, there's not a lot of people here. And I'm going, oh my gosh, I saw this kid who's 23. I remember when they were in pre-K at Bladensburg Elementary School. Now they're all grown up and now they're here with their, you know, significant other. So I think it's all relative in terms of, do you know a lot of people showing up or not? If not, I can see it feeling like, oh gosh, we're doing this and everyone's from somewhere else. But I, I think if the town administrator can help us in the coming fiscal year to figure out how we measure our metrics, event over event, you're right, it's going to give us some good data.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Mayor, because, yeah, because I see people, I talk to people, you know, where, 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 where you're from and, and yeah, see people who come back into the community that they've moved out of the community, but they're coming back and visiting with their families and so forth. But, and, and so it would just be something, because if we're saying, and we have in all of these events, because I know that we are legislators, but we're doing all of these events, we want that engagement with the, with the community. But then, and then, and Councilman Black talks about this a lot as well. We want, and, you know, they'll, they'll come out, but then when we need them to come out too for election time and stuff like that, and those, those types of things, you know, we want, you know, trying to, to increase that engagement. Don't want this to be a long conversation about that, you know, how, whatever that, that looks like, you know, just somewhere up the lines, further up. But right now, when you talk about with the, with the budget and can, we can't afford, we, we, well, not to spend money on it, but if we look at, I don't know if there's grant funding or something that, that may support, you know, something that's data-driven at, at some, some time to, to look at that, but it would be really good to know that how many, how many residents are really coming out, Bladensburg, you know, residents, really, really coming out to all of these events that we, that we do. But we do a lot of events.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Blind, let me pause in case, because we can't see you on the screen. I just want to make sure I don't miss you.
Can you hear me very well? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, um, the reason why I really brought it up because of the, of the cuts. Now, what you, if you're speaking of an event like Fourth of July, that will always be hard to detect because people are going to come out where they see, so that's just whether they live here or live, or don't live here. But like you say, if you can do some research for Fourth of July, that's going to be a hard thing to try to pivot through. But if they're small events, I'm sure that the data, we can do data on our own. But Fourth of July, Bladensburg Day, those things are really covered with a lot of people. And trying to find out, that's going to be very hard.
Yeah.
Very hard. So we probably just decide how we're going to do it or how it's going to look next year. But an event like that, it's going to be hard to track.
Yeah, thank you for that. You're right. Any other comments or questions regarding the special events budget overview? Did you, I don't want to leave you out, Councilmember McBride.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think we probably can get some data from our food drive, like for Thanksgiving and Christmas.
We definitely have data on the food drive and we actually restrict that to making sure that people, that's part of some of the issues that we usually ask people for their driver's license to proof, of proof of Bladensburg residents. And we actually ask people to pre-register for that. So that actually is part of that process.
And that actually helps keep it to just residents. I'll tell you, I had to stop someone because they tried to say, oh, I'm picking up for my mom too. And so I said, oh, where does mom live? And, oh, Gallantown Street. Oh, did you know that's not in Bladensburg? So even when people try it, because we know, most of us that are working that line know how to shut it down. We know the streets that are in town. And I'm telling you, even with the names, if you give it to me, my mom such and such on such and such street, okay, if I know that person, I'll give you a break, but to just throw some random name and street, we don't, for that very reason to track it. But thank you for raising that. So I guess little by little, to Councilmember Brown's point, we can, as the events come up, determine how we want to track it and then just share that update as part of the report out back to the council. Sorry, Councilmember.
And also, just to refer back to Councilmember Brown, in every event, whether it's in Bladensburg, out of Bladensburg, fireworks, everybody's going to show up from wherever town. So that's something you still can't even get read off. Because if I, if I live in Maryland and there's a fireworks going on in Chevalier and I like it, I'm going to go to Chevalier. So this is, it's, there's a pros and cons between the firework event. And I, I personally feel like the firework is a great thing. Like my family, they go. They never used to, but now they go. So there's a pros and cons, but the data will be good. And I would like to see how we'll track that.
That's true. And as you, I know the council is already aware of this, but just for the public, there was a tourism zone bill that passed the legislature last year. And part of the desire is for communities like ours to be tourism zones, to attract people here so that if they're coming for the fireworks, then they come early, they have dinner, to draw people into your communities and then also tie into some state funding. So as we work toward being a destination place and not just a place that people commute to DC and come home through, but a true place that people will want to stop, these events go a long way in getting our community on the radar of people that otherwise wouldn't even think about coming here for a special event.
Mayor, real quick, I don't know if you can see my hand or not, but just to touch, you know, you know, the fireworks are good. I mean, we, we did Port Townsend for 18 years without fireworks and people came and it was good. And I'm, my, my concern with the budget is that with accident, the, the, what with the, the administration team, and we know that in all departments, you know, we're cutting back somewhere, we're, we're saying, okay, you know, we're going to, you know, you know, spend money, this amount of money on fireworks. And, and, and then, you know, you have to, you know, they're working late and until, until 10, 11 o'clock at night on that night train, you know, getting them back home to their families. And, but how, how do we kind of, you know, balance that? And even saying, okay, you know, we're cutting back, but we still need to, want you to come out and work these events as well. So yes, yes, we want to invite people to come and, and, and then, and I, and I don't know if it's partnering a lot more instead of, you know, trying to, you know, do everything just, you know, Bladensburg by ourselves with more collabora, collaborations, relationships. And, but that's kind of where I'm, because I mean, I love the fireworks too, with the fireworks, you know, all, you know, all over. A lot of fireworks happening and, but it's just that cost.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, for all of that. I think when you look at our budget, we're what percent of the budget, Vito? The mayor and council budget, which includes the events?
I would say less than, I mean, your, your total budget, about three, two to three percent of the budget.
Okay, so we're two to three percent of the budget and talking about cutting. But I think, Chief, I'm sorry to look at you, but I just would ask that if there's a way you can help us to close this deficit and we can talk more about that, that would make more sense to me versus saying we have to cut back on two to three percent of the town's overall budget to get where Councilmember Brown is saying. I feel like we are the smallest and we made some cuts in the meeting before last Friday. And so we've made an effort to cut an already small budget. But Chief, you have the biggest piece of the pie and being fully transparent. And so if you're able, that would be greatly appreciated because the millions of dollars, there's more that you have to work with. And then obviously, if the stop sign cameras, the speed camera revenue come in better than the conservative forecast, then we're in a better position. But at least if you can help us figure out how to close that gap, then it will ensure that our admin team doesn't have to take those pay cuts and we can still provide services to the residents. Because what I don't want to happen is that we're asking more of our residents and then providing less. That doesn't feel good to the taxpayers. Any other comments or questions? So with that, I think, you know, let's wait to hear to see what Chief can offer up in that regard. But I definitely appreciate all the thoughts from the council because for the residents watching, you can tell everyone feels strongly about trying to close the gap, trying to figure out ways to help you, to serve you, but to also be good fiscal stewards. So we'll continue. We have the first reading of the budget tonight, second reading in June. So there's still opportunities to make adjustments before the budget is finalized. And speaking of budget, we're now moving into item number five, financial business, starting with item A, financial and FY 2026 budget for the May update. Town Administrator and Treasurer Tenelli, I'll turn it over to you.
Not going to share. I think, so we've sort of, we've presented a couple of things in this budget year. Overall, and I just wanted to kind of go back a step, if that makes it easier, to kind of tell you where we came from and where we are. As we started off the budget year again, we were about at $1.5 million off of what we needed to close our complete gap. And over the last seven budget sessions, actually eight budget sessions, including the special, we've moved through and reduced that to about $314,314. It's very, I can, that number sticks in my head, I think, 314, 314. Someone needs to box it and play it on the Lotto. Alright, so 314, 314. That in some ways, we, we had, we had actually lowered it to about $150,000. But when we went back through and we were looking at some increases in commodities and insurance that were recently updated in our forecasts because of actually talking to Legit, we ended up at this new 314 number. That includes staff, for the admin staff, taking the $50,000, but that's because we don't have a position to give back. The other departments have made cuts. The chief has frozen positions and his staff is also looking at, has also done where they're going to, they're going to increase the amount for take-home vehicles. And everyone is going to end up paying a little bit more for their health insurance in the new year. So there are things from staff and I think the one thing, I just want to make sure that we're, I think the one thing that, from transparency and for, from the standpoint of the way that we've looked at the budget, there are several tax increases that are actually part of this budget. And we wanted to make sure that we had a high level of service because there have been increases to the taxes to, for, to the businesses and the commercial and on apartments. And we wanted to provide the same level of services to residents that we've had. We didn't want to decrease those services. And so throughout the budget process, we worked hard not to decrease services to residents while trying to balance that with ways that we could save money and efficiencies. We've also looked at what things that we could, that we're not going to spend this year, that we spent last year. You guys were talking about something like the, with the, as far as the meal that we do at Thanksgiving. That was provided by ARPA. That's not in our base budget right now. So that would be a fundraising opportunity to try to do the turkeys this year because those were provided through your ARPA funding and they're not included in your base budget right now. So we're going to have to go to the community and try to get those services donated, work with nonprofits to do that. So in the way that you're, that I think the council, the spirit, what the council's asking us to do, we're actually going to take that on and try to fund those programs through that same mechanism. I think that this year is doing a lot more with less. In the updated budget document that we've provided, the proposed budget document, that's both online and copies are here in the town hall. We've tried to come up, we tried to put together a strategy, a long-term roadmap, not just the fact that this is a one-year situation. This is a multi-year situation. I think the best thing that we also need to understand is that this town has grown quickly over the last five years. You've gone from a little bit of under 6 million in 2020, until in 2020, to right now being about 12 million. You've doubled your budget, you've doubled your capacity over the last five years. And that comes with some cross and a little bit of growing pains, not that you can't afford it, not that anybody did anything wrong, not that anybody can, you know, can change it. It's just the fact that you're growing, you're making changes and you're providing additional services to residents. And sometimes that comes at a cost and that, that change actually takes a way of changing in how we look at government operations. We're not making recommendations to add more staff administratively to help to, to do this. We're actually looking at technology on how to assist staff over the next year as far as automating a lot of processes that we currently do manually so that we can be more efficient. We've automated processes over the last year that, including our budget process and our, and our agenda processes. We've now done our public information, our information is now online completely, thanks to our town clerk. We are now also looking at our code enforcement, moving that to an online process. And the chief also got, has, oh, two, over three years ago, put us on MyBladensburg with CRM and we have a complaint process that's online. What this year and next year is, is making sure that we can automate and become more of a, a futuristic city. And we're really trying to work towards that so that we can help to streamline our operations, create efficiencies and also balance where we are. You know, provide that service faster, quicker and better. Next year, we will be fully online to take credit card payments. So we're no, not as many checks, not as much cash. We're, we're moving towards those things. So I think this is a really, and it's sad to say, like, it's, it's, it's kind of sad, it's not sad to say. It's great to say that we're moving forward even though there might be growing pains. It's like kids, like when kids grow and their pants are a little too short. Well, that's what we are right now. Our pants, we're growing, but our pants are a little bit too short. But by next year, we can take out those hems and we might have the right. But by next year, we can take out those hems and we might have the right size pair of pants moving forward. Does that, does that help?
That's a great visual.
So, I don't know.
Talking like a real mom.
Yeah, well, I, I was one of those people that I grew in, in high school and I. When I came into high school, I was like five-two and when I came out of high school, I was five-eight and I still had this, I was still like, still a size two, but the pants were way up. Uh, so like I, you know, so it's like I, I had like capris by the end of high school, so, um.
You had capris before they were.
They were, they were style. So anyways, I, I think the town is catching up. We'll catch up to that growth.
I appreciate that perspective and I do think you're right, um, because of the growth, you can justify the direction that we're going as it relates to the property taxes. I do want to acknowledge prior to this year, they hadn't been raised, what we did the apartments last year, just incrementally, a few cents. But prior to that, it had been, Mr. Tenelli. Your mic, sorry.
I'm sorry. I thought, I, I, I thought it was going to be a quick yes or no question, so I didn't. Um, I went back to two thousand and four and as far as back as I could go and I didn't see any increases for the last twenty-some years, so.
And that's.
At least, at least.
So if you just look at two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-four, last year, first incremental adjustment. But you look at the incremental improvements in staff, the growth, the expanded services, we're behind. On our budget because we did not go up at all for all those years. And not that we needed huge jumps, but even just marginal adjustments to help us keep pace. So I just want the public to understand that. We're correcting something because we weren't, you know, innovating in terms of, okay, we need to be thinking for the future, planning for expanded services. And now that we're at that point, our choice, really only choice is to go up. With these tax increases to help us maintain services and not cut what businesses and, um, our residents have come to expect. So I appreciate that perspective. Anything else, Mr.?
I mean, it, just to piggyback on what you're saying, um, you know, it, you're. When you don't increase taxes, uh, through all that time, um, you, you're missing all that compounded. Revenues on top of that, so, um, and we've always done more with less and, um, you know, uh, so now it's just costing more. So, um, across the board, um, and we're trying to stay competitive with all the other jurisdictions because everybody watches everybody. So it's like, you know, um, I just stay competitive with pay and benefits, um, you know, and, and trying to keep up with, um. Um, commodities prices, so, um. And it's, it's costing a lot more these last three to four years than I've seen in the last few years before that.
Totally agree. Ms. Watson, Chief Collington, Mr. Hall, um, Officer Reinhardt, anything else that you all want to add before we move on?
Well, real quick, uh, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity to add to the conversation. Uh, I, I do want to say that, uh, I agree with everything that, um, Town Administrator put out. Uh, because we were behind, you know, and no pun intended, but we were in a stone age for many, many years. And now moving into the twenty-first century, um, things change, technology changed. Um, and I would say, you know, from the public safety perspective, um, looking at the reduction in crime. Um, over the past few years, um, speaks volume that we, we are heading in the right direction. And we have an obligation to keep this community safe.
Thank you for that, Chief. I just want to make sure there's no hands raised online. Give me one second. Okay. All right, so with that, that completes, uh, item five A for a financial and FY twenty twenty-six budget. We're now on to the budget ordinance for, um, ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty-six.
Mayor, just pretty much ditto from me on that because that's, I kind of went through the ordinance information, which is what's attached, but the ordinance again, um, just from the standpoint of. Um, what are the new tax rates? Um, to, in the next, uh, hearing, you will be going through what your new tax rates are by section. Um, and I'm going to do this from the top of my head. It's eighty-five cents for apartments. Eighty-two cents for commercial industrial and we remain at seventy-four cents for our residential. We're making, and those are, that's what's required as far as part of the law, um, for us to, um, as far as the, um. The, the tax rate, the real property constant yield, because it's not a constant yield anymore, it's just the, what your change of tax rates are. So those are, that's just an overview. Again, the budget documents attached, there's a lot of information that's been explained in that. Um, this year, and we're hoping that that helps to, one, for the public to understand our budget process a little bit more transparently. Um, and to provide information that eventually that Mr. Tenelli can get something from GFOA and for the hard work that he's been doing on these budgets.
Thank you for that, Town Administrator. Any other comments from the staff before I go to council with questions? I know, again, it's the first reading tonight, so we still have time to, um, make final adjustments before the June meeting. And looking online, okay, so no hands online, no hands in the room. Uh, again, um, it'll only be the first reading at tonight's meeting, so the public can be aware of that. The next item is under new business for annexation items. And so for that, I will turn it over to the Town Administrator again.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the, this are the, these are the three items for on our annexation, which is a part of the seven fifteen. I'm sorry, the seven o'clock agenda, which is our special council meeting. The first one is, um, resolution two dash twenty twenty-five. And this is an annexation of the Public Playhouse property and the adjoining properties to that. Um, I know that we have some questions, which I will, which I can either answer on the record at the, um, the hearing. Um, from a citizen, so that can be answered there, but, um, this is a, a, a seven or seven acres, seven acres plus or minus. Um, annexation and it will, it's, it's a shorter period because of the size of the annexation rather than the longer period, which the next one, which you'll have on the next one. So if there are any questions in regards to, uh, resolution zero two dash twenty twenty-five, it'll go into effect, um, after twenty days. After the reading and the, and the passage by council.
Great. Did you want to also mention the other?
Yes, I will do that. Just wanted to make sure if there's any other questions, just to make sure that I'm not, I'm not.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, so the next one is the, um, annexation plan for, um, for the waterfront park. And this is number, this is resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Um, it's a resolution that, and some, that will annex the, uh, Bladensburg Waterfront Park. Um, if residents don't know, it's not technically in Bladensburg, so this will now add it to our, um, to the town of Bladensburg's, um, corporate limits. So, um, this is, this will, this is a, this agenda item is the annexation plan. You must place the annexation plan first and then there's an accompanying resolution, which is the next one, which is zero three dash twenty twenty-five. Which will have two readings, so you'll do the first reading tonight and the second reading, um, in June for that one. And they are two companion pieces, so the mayor will do the reading of the annexation resolution. Um, plan and then, then she will do an introduction of the resolution itself, zero two dash twenty twenty-five, and they're both for the annexation of that property.
Thank you, Town Administrator for the synopsis. Are there any questions from the council regarding the annexation items for the next meeting? No? Okay. All right, and then we'll keep going with item six B, ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five, Town Administrator?
I am going to introduce it, but I'm going to co-host this with Mr. Um, Reinhardt, the Code Enforcement Supervisor. This is ordinance, uh, eleven twenty twenty-five. It's an ordinance that amends our business license and our permit fees and adds the registration license fee. Um, Mr. Um, Reinhardt has been working hard on this and I'm going to let him kind of go through this, but it's the first time that we've done this update since. Twenty nineteen, Mr. Reinhardt, so it's on to you.
Good evening, Mayor Council. This is the, uh, first update we've had since twenty nineteen. This is going to bring up our, uh, business license fees to. Um, put us in line with the other communities here in, uh, Prince George's County. Um, it's going to, uh, it's going to affect all our, um, all our businesses, um, in a good way. Um, because we do provide and offer them a lot of services. But, uh, at this time, if you have any questions, I'm glad to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. I thought it was further back than twenty seventeen, because I, when I went to the code. Um, I saw David Harrington's name on there, so that's going way back.
Well, that was the first step. That's when we, um, originally did it, we raised them and then in twenty nineteen, we did them into a classification system. So it kind of streamlined the process.
Got it.
And then before that was two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, okay. Yeah, because you were saying two thousand nineteen, but yeah, it's, it's definitely time. We appreciate you taking the time to go through it. Um, there were certain. Elements that I've really appreciated in terms of right sizing us compared to what other municipalities are doing, so, um. We're not being extremely high, we're just, you know, right there in, in the average with everyone else. Uh, let me just look at this.
Oh, and Mayor, just, uh, just, I forgot that we did make two small changes, um, to the ordinance from the last, from the first reading. We amended the grass height, um, in the, those, the other ones, sorry. And this one, we amended the amount for class two ordinance, I mean, class two licenses, um, slightly because of actually looking at. The increase and trying to, um, more right-size that, so that has been, that change has been made on this one. And I just wanted to make sure that for the notes, because that is one of the changes that was made between the first reading and second reading.
Any questions about those modifications? All right, so we'll continue on with the next item, ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five. And we'll turn it back over to you, Town Administrator and Officer Reinhardt.
Yes, this is again, another cooperative one with, um, Officer Reinhardt. So this is, uh, the ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five. An ordinance for, to repeal and re, um, and to repeal and reenact the property maintenance code. And then, um, also to add the prop, the rental housing code to our ordinance. Um, what we've done is work with our town attorney in, um, modifying our, uh, rental code. Because we are going to start a rental license program and add from the first year that it will be voluntary for. Um, residential and then moving forward towards enforcement. But the one big part of that is that, um, and I'll let Mr., I'm not going to steal all of Mr. Um, Reinhardt's thunder on this one, but. He's working really hard to modernize our, um, code enforcement. So, Mr. Reinhardt, why don't you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure, we're looking to, um, again, we, we've never had a rental housing program, um, in the town of Bladensburg. We're actually looking to, again. Um, obtain some software to help us streamline and also, um, it's going to give us an opportunity to get into some of these places where. Prince George's County seemed to, I, I don't want to say drag their feet because they're only limited to what they have, but who knows our town better than we do. Um, it's also going to, again, the software we're looking at, um, over the next few weeks, it's going to streamline the process, it's going to actually help us with citations. And doing the rental inspections and, um, as the Town Administrator, as we mentioned earlier, we did make one minor change and that was taking it, the, uh, grass ordinance. Said twelve inches where our ordinance is nine inches, so we just made that correction and updated that form. If you all have any questions, feel free.
Thank you for that. And, um, you mentioned the rental property program. That's one that I'm particularly happy about because we have such a large number. Of apartments and so having this codified regarding rental units and really the way you spell out. Unfit rental premises and our ability to do something. We went through a tough situation before with some residents in two separate buildings, one in Ward two, one in Ward one. And I think this will go a long way in helping the, the town have some teeth in enforcement. So that we're not just relying on the county. So, um, from that standpoint, I just truly appreciate you moving this forward. Are there any other questions? Again, just a reminder, tonight at the next meeting will be the second reading of this particular ordinance. No questions, Councilmember Blunt? Okay. All right, so next we have ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five regarding Chief's Territory Vehicles and Traffic.
Yes, so this is Chief's territory, but what we're, what, um, we've asked our town attorney to help us to, um, to write in a section in regards to stop sign monitoring. Um, and this section allows the town to enforce stop sign, um, um, monitoring and so I'll let the chief. Go further on how this program works. Chief?
All right. Good afternoon again, Mayor, Council, community and colleagues. Uh, yeah, we're excited about this because, uh, this program will, uh. Alert our drivers to stop at our stop signs, our crosswalks. Uh, where we know most pedestrian accidents do occur when they're making the right turn. Uh, so we want them to be able to stop and pay attention to our pedestrian school kids. Again, with seven schools, sixty-five hundred students, uh, going through the community. Uh, you know, this is our, uh, force multiplier, because the police can't be everywhere all the time, but having this. Uh, additional resource in town, uh, will alert drivers to stop at the stop line before the intersection. Uh, so they won't, uh, receive a citation.
I caught that subtle hint. No rolling stops to stop at the stop sign. Did you hear that subtle hint? So, all right, Council, we could not get a ticket with these stop sign cameras. Thank you for that, Chief, and we agree, our top priority is really protecting our pedestrians. And whether it's children or our seniors or any family members walking through town and so. I just appreciate you taking this step, given the hi- high quantity of students that we have on a day-to-day basis, um, in our community. I don't see any hands online. Councilmember Blunt, are you good? Any comments or questions? Okay, Counselor, you good or any questions for?
Mayor, yeah, I just have something for the chief, uh, the, so chief and, you know, so people will know, I mean. We, we live in Bladensburg too, so we driving through the town as well, so we're subject to the same, to, to, to the same rules and regs. And, uh, but so that people will know, because we're, we're, it, it had happened to me, because I thought I, you know, I, I stopped and I stopped where I was supposed to stop. But come to find out, not in Bladensburg, yeah, because it's not in Bladensburg yet, but come to find out that, you know, I guess I was over the white line or something, whatever. So although I stopped, I was over the white line and still got a ticket for stopping. So you want to know what my question is? If you're talking, Chief, I can't hear you.
He's waiting, he's waiting for your question, Councilwoman, that's all.
Okay, I didn't even see a nod, anything, yeah, so, but, but just maybe, you know, you know, kind of explain, explain that, you know, to the residents, to the film. Because they'll, you know, they all have the same things, they'll, okay, you know, I stopped and I came to a complete stop, but not knowing that. You know, hey, you gotta, yeah, this is where you need to stop so that the camera doesn't act like, give you a ticket anyway or something.
Okay, sure. So every intersection has a crosswalk as well as a stop line. So by law, you have to stop prior to the stop line, uh, which is before the crosswalks. So sometime people will drive right up to the crosswalk, but there's a stop line that you must stop. Prior to, if you encroach upon that stop line, you will trigger the stop sign camera, thus issuing a citation to you.
So Chief, one more, one more question. So because some intersection, sometimes, okay, you can stop at the line, but then sometimes you, you, you still can't see. And you need to full, pull a little, pull up a little bit more over the line, so what happens in those instances?
So once you stop, come, come to a complete stop, complete stop means the wheels are not in motion. Uh, after that, it, it allows you, it resets the camera and it allows you to move forward. But you must stop first prior to the stop line.
Okay.
And I did see, Chief, I know we're just looking at the ordinance, but within the packet in section six, item I, I think this is. It even talked about the video, how it records and the amount of milliseconds that it's capturing so that. When your staff member is reviewing the tickets before they're approved, they would actually see the video. They would see the wheels come to a complete stop and then to Councilmember Brown's point, continue and proceed versus assuming the vehicle never stopped. That's the, um, one of the selling points that I had in here about the accuracy of the software.
Yes, and that, that video link is also sent to the, uh, violator as well, so they can view it. And make a decision whether or not they want to contest the citation.
The way that it was written in here made me laugh when I was reading the packet because it was sort of like, you can. Test us if, or if you want to or challenge, but please know, we've sent you the video evidence. So you can think about that before you decide whether or not you want to dispute it. So I just kind of chuckled, but do appreciate that the, um, violator or potential violator does get that evidence as well. So if you see yourself in your bright neon pink shirt behind the wheel and you know you. So if you see yourself in your bright neon pink shirt behind the wheel and you know you didn't make that complete stop, it's it's on you. And then I also noticed there's a um, a period thirty days before this rolls out. Um, notices will go out to people, letting them know, just like we did with the speed cameras. This is a new program. This is what the violation is. It takes effect such and such date, but it's really intended to be a warning. So that when we actually go into effect, they've had an opportunity to be made aware before. I saw they had tools to help us with Press Kit, um, education, training for staff and everyone else. So I feel like there's gonna be, knowing your team and how well you do the community engagement. There'll be a robust plan for educating the community. Do you wanna talk about that at all?
Yes, so I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. That is uh, one of our topics that we have, we can't wait to get out there. Uh, we do have our traffic vest. We will be doing training educational videos prior. And we will uh, we'll have vehicles pull up to the stop line and demonstrate where the stop line is. Uh, and then we'll make sure all this information get rolled out through our social media platforms.
So Councilmember Brown may or may not be in one of those videos. Oh, wait, she's not there. Oh, no, I'm gonna have to tease her later. Oh, she's there, okay. Thank you for that. I was just teasing, saying you might be in one of those training videos, Councilmember Brown.
I know, give me a one.
Alright, if there are no other questions about ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty five, I'll move on to the resolutions for the council's review. We first have resolution twenty tw- I'm sorry, twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the town of Blainsburg celebrating Municipal Clerks Week from May fourth to May tenth, which was last week. But we still want to acknowledge the awesome work of our municipal clerks. So Town Administrator, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I was gonna do these as a packet, but I will say, yes, I would like to acknowledge the work that was done by our town clerk team uh, last week, which from the fourth to the tenth, which is the National Municipal Clerks Day. Um, and we do have a proclamation that has been put into the next set of, in the next set of meetings on the seven fifteen on your agenda to to pass out. These will all be noted as read in the ma- on the record because of the the way that our, so we don't have to read these into the record because they're all posted. So that is the first one. Congratulations, Miss um, Miss Watson and Miss Samaya.
Awesome work. We appreciate you guys. You're the backbone to keep us running over here. And then the next resolution dat- uh, twenty-six dash twenty twenty-five, celebrating National Police Week. I'll turn it back over to you, Town Administrator.
Actually, I'm gonna turn this one over to the chief. To, this is this week and this is his week, so I'll let him go there.
Thank you again, uh, Mayor, Council, community and colleagues. Uh, good day. I'm Chief Tyrone Collinson of the Blainsburg Police Department. I bring this message with deep reverence, pride and humility. Today and every day, we pause and honor the brave men and women of law enforcement who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. We also stand in unwavering support of those who continue to serve our communities with strength, courage and dedication. Those we have lost were not just officers, they were protectors, mentors, parents, children and friends. They put, they put service above self and lived out the sacred oath to serve and protect. Through their watches, though their watches have ended, their legacies, lives on every badge still worn. Still lives on every badge that still worn. And every call answered and in every life protected. To those who continue to serve on the front lines, notice, your commitment does not go unnoticed. You embody integrity, resilience and honor. Despite the challenges and risks, you remain steadfast in your duty. You run toward danger when others run away. You bring calm to chaos and you represent the best of what it means to serve with purpose. I'm especially proud of the dedicated men and women of the Blainsburg Police Department. Your unwavering commitment, professionalism and tireless efforts are evident each and every day as you serve the residents of this town. Because of your steadfast service, the town of Blainsburg remains safer, stronger and more vibrant, a more vibrant community. To the families of our fallen heroes, our hearts are forever with you. We know your sacrifice is long-lived. Your loved ones are not forgotten. Their courage will continue to inspire generations of officers to come. As we reflect today, let us also recommit ourselves to the mission we were called to do. To build safer communities, to act with fairness, compassion and uplift the legacy of those who gave everything. May God bless the memory of our fallen heroes. May he guide and protect those still serving. And may we, as one law enforcement family, continue to stand united, proud and unwavering. Stay safe and we commend you for the hard work that you do. And I just wanna add uh, real quick, Mayor, I'm so proud of our Blainsburg Police Department, our under guard. Uh, they are all over the place. Today they were out at uh, Reagan National Airport. They were receiving the families of fallen officers that are flown in all over the country. Uh, so they form a co- uh, cordon. When they come off the flight, they take their bags, they take them down to the shuttle and they take them to the hotels. And Wednesday, we'll be our candlelight vigil, where we have all the families and it's hundreds of thousands of law enforcement from across the country. When we do the candlelight vigil, we have keynote speakers. So if anyone ever get a chance to go down to Police Week, I would strongly encourage you to go witness and see the sacrifices and just see the commitment of this professional uh, that this profession that we are in. Uh, and see the hard work that these men and women do. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for uh, that information about National Police Week. We certainly appreciate it and wanna acknowledge all those who serve. It is not an easy job, especially in today's climate. But we're grateful for all the men and women who serve honorably across the country. And of course, pay our respects to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. So thank you for the invitation to join and hopefully some of the council members and staff will be able to make it down there on Wednesday. Uh, that completes the discussion. Or wait, sorry, let me just make sure there's no hands raised on here. Okay, nope, okay. So next we're on uh, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, over to you, Town Administrator.
Hi, yes, this is the um, it's National Public Works Week, the week of the eighth, the eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, yay. Mister, Mister Hall, do you wanna have any, do you wanna add anything about Public Works Week? I really do appreciate the, but I, not that I don't appreciate everybody else, but I, even that, but I do appreciate the Public Works staff and the work they do every day. And I just wanted to say that to Mister Hall and his team. I think he knows how much that I care about this guy. So, Mister Hall.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council and residents at home. Uh, I didn't, I didn't have, it's hard to come behind a great gentleman like uh, Chief, so I mean, I think I might need to move.
You're supposed to have a whole thing printed on Mister Hall.
I know, I know, I know. I I, next time I will, but um, I just wanna uh, thank the guys and thank the Mayor Council for allowing us to put together a staff. We've been, we've been down a couple of guys for, I mean, decades, you know, so I just wanna thank you. And the guys that we have, I mean, they do not just their jobs, job description or job tasks. These guys go above and beyond in other, I mean, you know, trying to make things look better as you come into the town of Blainsburg, not just in Blainsburg, but as you coming into the corridor of Blainsburg. These guys do a amazing job. I mean, it's 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 rough in a, in a, in the summertime because we have so much grass to cut. We have so many acres to cut, you know? And trying to do all the grass cutting and trying to also do other job tasks as well. That uh, 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 two additions to our department helped so much, so much. And I just wanna thank y'all for allowing us to do that, you know? We did have a freezer spot, but we're able to maintain and keep things, you know, moving the right way. Uh, again, I wanna thank the guys from Public Works. Appreciate everything.
Thank you so much and thank you to your whole staff who does such a great job and has to get around the entire town doing the things that most people don't think about. It's not just cutting the grass. You maintain things at Boswick House as needed. You're removing graffiti that you could, that's time you could be spending somewhere else. But because someone is being careless and destructive, now that takes time away from your other tasks. And you work with this on the S H A, you know, rights of way because you're here versus waiting on them to come and tend to those areas whenever their schedule allows. You see the maintenance needs to happen and you take care of it. And we truly do appreciate you. And oh my gosh, the road work. I was coming down fifty-seventh and I went, wait, they patched this section up that fast? I mean, were there elves in the night? Cuz I feel like one minute it was one way and then I came home from work late the other night and went, hold on, this wasn't like this when I went to work. But see, you're on top of it, making sure that those connections and collaborations happen, saving us money when you can. So we really appreciate you and we know you don't get the accolades sometimes that we give the police department and feel bad about that, but just don't think we love you any less. We so appreciate all the work you do.
No, man.
Yes, Chief. I'm sorry.
That's one, oh, that's one, that's 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 one thing that our our guys, you know, I can, I can, I can very vouch for that, that we just, we don't kind of manipulate what other departments are doing and how they receive their awards or anything. We just try to, we thank God that we able to do what we here do, do right now and have a job to do.
Hey, man, I just wanna add and and personally thank our Public Works crew, especially during the snow time. And keeping the city, uh, the town safe and making sure that emergency vehicles, motorists, pedestrians uh, are able to travel freely. When when you look outside of our borders and you see other streets are still packed with snow, our public works are on the front line, making it happen for us, keeping our streets. So I wanna say thank you personally.
Yes, sir, thank you. I mean, and 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 this, and and thanks for Chief for bringing that up, but um, um, we don't, we don't do that alone. We also have our dispatch and also the officers that are out there doing this to let us know, hey, it's time to come on in. So that's collaboration. Thank you, Chief, again.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate it. I thought back about the snow event this winter and I remember the county got blasted. And that went on for about a week of one section where folks could not get out of their homes. Yes, five days. But that was not our experience. Now, you can get out of Blainsburg. I can't guarantee what the state roads look like, but you can get around town. Councilmember Brown, thank you for your patience. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor. But um, Chief, you know, it was spot on again as well because on Newton Street, Newton Street, that's, that road is state highway. And um, they're supposed to come through and clean, but you know, the public works, they make sure if when we have an inclement weather event that they come through and they start that truck. Because you know, when you're, when you're, when you're on those backside streets, it's a little, it's a little bit more difficult, you know, to to manu- to maneuver. And um, that's definitely cuz people, seeing people sliding up and down that hill, but they'll come through and make sure they take care of that and continue to do so. So you know, just, just, you know, those types of things. And also with the, with the bulk trash pickup and everything. Make sure that that the bulk trash is is picked up and stuff. So just kind, just did Owen, what everyone's saying and thank you all so very much for the hard work that that you all do and helping to keep the, to keep the town of Blainsburg, you know, clean.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Brown. Um, any other comments or questions? I'm watching the time cuz I know we still have another page of agenda items to get through. So Ca- um, Councilmember Bailey Hedgepath, mm mm mm, Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath, uh, turn it over to you for the next two resolutions.
Yeah, so I'm gonna consolidate the next two resolutions. These are both applications for grant funding. The first one is for National Fish and Wildlife for a study that we're working on with the town of Edmiston in regards to um, flooding in the industrial area. Um, we're asking the town, the council to just sign off on a resolution of support. The second one is a resolution of support for a technical assistance grant um, from the Department of Housing and Community Development, which will, um, this is for the port towns in general for us, for the um, development of the Port Town CDC. It will help from the standpoint of allowing us to um, have a, have, to kind of, actually it will be, it'll help Blainsburg probably the most because it'll help to augment the funding so that we don't have to provide additional funding to the Port Town CDC for staffing through our common resilience. So those two are just support um, resolutions that just need to be approved by the council. For, and and they both go out this week. Uh, NIFLIP is tomorrow, the thirteenth. And the D C H D one is the sixteenth. I've been working on them for the last week and a half, so they're almost done.
Great, thank you for that and for continuing to look for opportunities to help us bring in resources to get the important work done. I know the um, Fish and Wildlife Grant is important cuz it's helping with gray water and green water. Um, infrastructure, so, or gray and green infrastructure that is, so, which is huge because of the industrial area. So um, and then similarly for the D H C D grant um, for the port towns, it's gonna be particularly important that once all of our legal paperwork is done, we have funding for staffing so we can immediately get to work on economic development projects to help the port town. So I appreciate you and Mister Barnes having the foresight to push on that. Any questions or comments from the council? Looking online. Great, thank you. Okay, and then we did move F two, um, we removed that from today's agenda. The next one is the contract approval for the janitorial services.
So I am going to let Mister Hall and Miss Watson talk about this one because they worked on this R F P for janitorial services.
I'm here in council. Um, in front of you now is our new janitorial service company that will be starting in July of the new fiscal year. Um, we did do an R um, R P and we received about thirty-eight submissions for this janitorial service. And in front of you now is Hydro Building Services. They were the most responsive um, bidder of all the thirty-eight that we had to go through. We did interview the top seven of the thirty-eight. And we do have actually Hydro online in case the the council does have any questions for them, but I'm just, you know, adding anything to to that.
Yes, I meant, they um, they came with a, uh, well, first of all, the price was was unbeatable. And not only unbeatable, but the price included everything. All your chemicals, all your uh, paper, bags, everything. So and also the list of stuff that they do, I mean, weekly. You know, I mean, we, our contractor that we have, you know, is is, we've, you know, stepping as, as Chief says, stepping into the new era now. Okay, so now the contractor that we got are, ha- that has a little bit more layout of their daily operation that we need as a town moving forward. It's not only for beautification or cleanness, it's also for employees' health as well in the work, work field, you know? So we, we, we put out, as as Virginia said, we had almost forty, you know, companies that was very interested in the job and we, we took all of them through the facilities and let them see what was going on, what it is and everything. And we just ju- just couldn't resist, you know, trying to take this one right here. And we, we've spoke to the, spoke to the gentleman plenty of times, you know, I've spoke to him a couple of times. Even when he was in the interview, he was asking a lot of questions and this, that, this, that. So we thought that that they, I mean, this company was the best fit for the town of Blainsburg. Not only for a list of, you know, items that they do, but budget-wise too as well.
Thank you for that overview, Madam Clerk and Mister Hall. And I definitely understand why you want us to move in this direction. I also understand they do more than what we're getting from our current vendor. And so having the digital app, having access to the schedule of cleaning. So you're not wondering, oh, did so-and-so, did they come? Are they coming to be able to view that online to remove any questions? Because you're busy, you're out and about, you know, working in the community. And then also just the other thing I appreciated was the inspection notes, that they actually share that information with you. So they can be your eyes and ears if there's something that could be a bigger problem because they're moving throughout the building, cleaning. And then also what you said about the staff health and safety, just saying the chemicals and things that they're using that are environmentally friendly. So they're not using toxic chemicals that Miss Watson, Mister Tenelli, and you know, everyone has to breathe in while they're sitting at their desks is hugely important. So I definitely understand and feel comfortable moving in this direction.
They also are green certified too as well.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. The one question I had for you is, are they an MBE? As I saw, the main office is in Rockville and then they have one here, I think on Caraway Court in Largo. Okay, but, and are they a minority business or an MBE or no?
I don't, I don't believe so. I didn't look, I didn't.
I tried searching online and couldn't find.
But we, that wasn't a requirement, so we didn't ask them to, to specifically say it, but they are.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I, and if they, if you have any questions for them, they are on.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the vendor from the council? They have a representative on the line at this time. I appreciate you being on with us this evening. Is there, if there's anything you want to say, um, while we're covering this item, you're more than welcome. Yeah, I see you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, well, we didn't have any specific questions, but appreciate you taking the time to join us tonight, Mister Hall. Again, Ms. Regina Watson, thank you for doing the research. I know it took a ton of time and effort to get through thirty-seven proposals, seven interviews and the back and forth with working through everything. So that completes the contract approval for item H. Next we'll move on to item I, which is.
We'll go back to H because H is the stop sign with Globo Noble, no, Nobro Global, Nobro, Nobro, Nobro Global, Nobro, blah, blah.
I have H as the Hydro Building Services and then I have I for Nova Global for Stop Sign Camera.
So we'll call it whatever you want to call it, Mayor. Next one I've got is, I'm looking at a different page, maybe I'm like, here's Nova Global, so.
It's, it's on here, it's item I. I promise it is. But no, um, over to you for that update between you and Chief, I guess.
Yes, thank you. This is actually Chief Collington's, um, and I believe that we did get some additional information on this from, um, his staff members, but this is the, um, this is the Stop Sign Camera, um, company. So Chief.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, we vetted three other, we, we vetted two other, uh, vendors for the Stop Sign, uh, enforcement project. Um, we felt that Nova Global, um, provided the best services, uh, to address the needs of Bladensburg. What we needed most was to have information where we could, um, have access to, since we own the video, we own the data, uh, just like we had a couple of hit and run incidents. Um, they will give us access to look into the cameras. Uh, these other companies were telling us, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And we know in critical incidents, uh, you know, time is of essence, uh, is critical. We need to get that data, if it exists, as soon as possible. Uh, so, you know, we're hoping that, um, the Mayor Council will approve the contract for Nova Global, um, tonight.
Thank you, Chief Collington. And one thing that I appreciate, it's, um, on page one ninety-nine in the packet, but it says, I mean, really, they're about speedy access to information and that is something that you have reinforced. Um, I thought also it would be helpful to the public to understand that they have secondary speed confirmation using a distance over time calculation. So the system knows every vehicle's exact position at all times. A basic algorithm calculates the time a vehicle takes to travel a specified distance within the enforcement zone. So when you talk about the accuracy, sending someone a citation in the mail, there's no guessing in this. They're using specific information based on video to show that a violation was committed. So it just helps protect us from falsely accusing someone of violating these cameras. So I appreciate the accuracy that they offer and the timeliness to get you the information and the access as well as the training for staff so that they can be well informed in the public education as we talked about before. Are there any other comments or questions about Navoa? It says, is it Novo or Navoa?
Nova.
Nova, okay.
Yeah. And, and if I can just say one other thing, um, after vendors, they were very responsive. Um, very responsive. We did a series, put them through myself, uh, Ms. Watson, Vito and, uh, Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath, we put, and Sergeant Harris. So we put them through a very rigid, uh, second and third interview and Nova Global, uh, rose to the, to the task.
That is great. Thank you all for the time you put into researching these vendors. The next item is, uh, contract approval for Muni Collect for Collection Services for the town of Bladensburg. Again, bringing us into the twenty-first century. Thank you, Town Administrator.
Yeah. Hello, Mayor Council. So this is an item that would approve a contract with Muni, um, Collect, Muni Code Collector, Muni Collect, sorry. Uh, I'm so, there's too many things. Muni Collect, um, this allows us to start, um, a collection process with, um, for, uh, the speed cameras and, uh, and all the different types of traffic enforcement initially. Um, also as what, what the chief has mentioned, that we have now tried to, we're going to be able to do flagging on our parking tickets. So we will be able to also collect the last three years of parking tickets with the collection company. We, um, actually surveyed and interviewed about four companies. Um, looking at different, um, com- uh, different collection services. Mister, Mister Tenelli and I actually spoke to three of them um, about their services. All of them are no fees attached. Um, because what, what we'll need to do, um, over in the, in the next meeting is to, um, add to our ordinance that we can charge a thirty-nine percent fee for collections, which, um, our town attorney is actually working up. But we wanted to get this, um, contract on here first so that we can give them our information so they can work through it. Um, and then we'll add the information to our, um, our agenda on the June agenda as an ordinance. But this is, they'll have a companion ordinance piece and, um, that to allow us to basically charge back that fee, which is standard within the state of Maryland. That's the max you could charge for collections. And that that fee, so it's basically a no cost to the town. So they will get the fee that is mandated, um, under, um, under the state law in regards to collection fees. So that's what we'll add to our ordinance is to allow us to charge that and then that to be passed on to whatever, um, whatever collection agency we use. We can actually engage with multiple collection agencies, um, and because of this issue, because of the fact that they can each only get the thirty-nine percent from the, from the debt. So I hope that helps and both the chief has also talked to them, his sta- his staff actually talked to Muni Collect, um, as well. So I don't know if he wants to provide any additional feedback, but we found them to be very credible. They have over, um, eight, um, places within, actually thirteen in the, in the state, but eight, seven or eight right here locally that they're working with.
Thank you, uh, Town Administrator. Anything else, Chief, you want to add to that?
Uh, not really, ma'am. Only thing I just want to say that when I spoke with all the other jurisdictions that everyone had high praise for this company. Very proficient, very professional and very, uh, responsive as well.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you, Chief. So council, it's six fifty-one and the last two items are also on the, um, seven o'clock meeting. Would you be okay if we just hold those over since they're already on the next agenda item? So we can take a short break before the next meeting starts at seven?
Hey, Mayor, that, that's fine. I just want to let you know that, that at our seven o'clock meeting, I've, um, I'm gonna have to drop at some point to ask the big excuse, but I did go through the materials and I, and I don't know, um, how many, you know, if you need anything voted on, if I'm not there, I, um, I, I do support the items that we need to, to, to be voted on in case I have to drop off before and ask to be.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilmember Brown. And maybe for the June meeting, if we could put excused absences on the agenda, because I know I need a couple as well. For the last two months, I've had to travel. So I missed the, um, two council meetings and then if we can add it for Councilmember Brown for the upcoming meeting as well and just vote on those. Uh, so with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn tonight's work session. So move, moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any comments or questions before we adjourn? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it, we're adjourned and we'll see you back shortly.